Let me get this trigger.
Good evening to everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, but I don't want to do it before six o'clock. Okay, good evening to everyone. Will I call the meeting to order? You can't hear? I can hear the echo though. You can hear me okay? Okay. So, just to let everyone know, we're in the infancy stages of our live streaming. So, we're testing out mics tonight. Nothing unusual is going on, but you will see a lot of technical things going around us today. So, we ask for your patience and your understanding as we proceed. The meeting called to order, I would like to ask one of our guests, Deacon Willis, if you would give us an opening prayer tonight.
Gracious, beloved Father, I want to thank you first and foremost, Father God, for that which you have given us this day, this life. I want to thank you, Father God, and the constituents that are here. We pray, Father God, that this meeting bring forth and bring to order that which needs to be done for that Pleasant Grove.
Yes.
We ask you, Father God, that that will be better this, you know, this court. We pray that whatever thoughts are shared with others, that they will receive it, Father God, just as is stated, a thought, maybe some advice, maybe some encouragement. But we just ask you, Father God, that while this meeting goes on, that you will let your people come in this room, Father God, to be with us, to lead all this court outside, Father God, and let us come to understand.
Amen. Thank you so much. Ex-counselor Dunn, if he would lead us in the pledge.
Attention, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every seat and every address for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, counselor, I mean, Mr. Cobb, if you would note, everyone is present tonight. And we need someone to make a motion for the approval of the minutes from October 6th.
I'll motion approve the minutes from October 6th.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any questions? Corrections, concerns? Hearing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, Mr. Cobb. And now, Counselor Houston, if you would address the bills for us.
I'll offer motion with bills in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents. And that is an adjusted amount. We're still holding the Colston contractor for the work at the park until we're satisfied with all the punch lists, all that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Calhoun. By Counselor Calhoun, that motion has been made and properly seconded. Any questions on the bills? No questions? Hearing no questions, but I will, for public consumption, let you know that this also includes our annual incentive payment to the Jack's Family Restaurants, as well as our retirement system payment. We're actually paying for the demolition of the house. We have approved that previously in one of our meetings. The house on, what was the address? Twelfth Lane. Twelfth Lane, thank you. And we are placing forty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety cents on hold. And Knight Automotive, was the repair to a police vehicle correct? Or was that the fire truck? The fourteen thousand? Oh, I'm sorry, Local Government Corporation, that was our annual dues?
No, that's the, for, usually for the financial.
Okay.
Business license.
Oh, okay. So, it was a fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollar payment to that LGC corporate, I mean, Local Government Corporation. And he said it was for the business license and garbage billing system. Any additional comments? All those in favor, bow your hands. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Good evening to everyone again. A couple of things this evening. First of all, again, Happy Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please make sure that you take care of yourself and your body and your loved ones. Please encourage them to get regular checkups, that's male and female. Encourage them to do all of the healthcare items that they need to do, because it, cancer can be a silent killer, but we, there are many that are preventive. So, just make sure that you're taking care of yourself. Congratulations to our PG Varsity team for making the 4A playoffs. Their last regular season game will be this Friday, which is also senior night. And I encourage all of our citizens to go out and support. It would be nice to see the stands full for this last regular season game. The first round playoffs is next Friday night. I'm not sure of where they're playing, but it's about three hours away. And that brings me to this. They are looking for donations for support, for team meals, for the transportation, for all of the necessities that they'll need during the travel. Here is your opportunity to assist with contributing and supporting our high school students as they go to the first round of the playoffs. It would be a great thing if we could all support them. You can contact the high school to donate, or you can bring your donation to City Hall, and we would be happy to transport it to the high school in your name. We'll put it in a sealed envelope and make sure that it gets there. We would just love any contributions that you can make. Wish, I mean, thankful for a great season for Pleasant Grove Middle School. They made it to the semifinals. Unfortunately, they came up a little short against McAdory, but we want to congratulate them on a great season because they did very well. Congratulations to the Pleasant Grove Middle School cheer team, who competed, competed at the Birmingham Crossplex this past Thursday? Was it Thursday? Yeah, this past Thursday. They came up point zero seven points shy of what they needed to make it to the finals. But they did a fantastic job. So, we had an opportunity to go to their showcase, which was the preview, and cheer them on and give them a simulated experience, and they had no faults during the competition. So, we are very proud of them for that. This was the first time in several years that they have competed. And so, Mr. Watkins did have the opportunity to share with me that this council and our contribution, the council and previous mayor, and our contribution was vital in them being prepared to get to this point. So, I'm so thankful that we were able to help with those resources. Thankful for the support that has been, that has been given to the cheerleaders. Again, they need your support, continuous support, because they have two more competitions this year, and that requires transportation, and they have to pay for that transportation, and then they need meals while they're traveling. So, they just competed in Huntsville this past Friday, but I don't have the results of that as of today. But I will share them during our next meeting. We will proceed with an official seniors program, I'm happy to announce, Ms. Dansby. So, we have not discussed the budget yet, but we will proceed with the program. And we will give you more details on that in the coming weeks. So, I'm excited about that for our seniors in the, in the community. But also, I encourage those that are not or don't feel that they are seniors yet to visit the community center and spend time with some of our local seniors, because what I have found is sometimes you just, you just want some companionship. And so, it's a good opportunity to just go share with some of our seniors. But we will keep you posted on that. We do have breast cancer t-shirts for sale at our fire department. Counselor Houston, will you stand up, please? He is displaying one of them. And they are on sale for twenty dollars, and we're asking for your support, because all of these proceeds will go to breast cancer research. And we want to be able to give a great contribution to a much-needed cause. So, if you would, support, encourage your friends to go support. The shirts are twenty dollars. They have them available in size small to two XL. Is that correct? Okay, small to two XL. The fire station, I mean, the police station dispatchers are there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They are, they have them in the dispatch office, so no time is a bad time. We just encourage you to go and support. Reminder about the council meeting location change. It's going to be November 3rd at the Pleasant Grove High School for our very first meeting with the new council. That will include our swearing ceremony. And at this time, council, I would love to make a motion to change our meeting time from five-thirty to six o'clock. And I'm putting that in the form of a motion. For November 3rd. Okay, we have a motion and a second. That was Counselor Houston. Any questions? Counselor Houston? Any questions on that? And just for clarification, we're changing it to six o'clock to allow time, because I'm sure that it's going to be a well-attended meeting. So, we want to allow people the opportunity to get in, to get seated, and to share in this experience. So, any questions?
The meeting will be at six.
The meeting, the pre-council will be at six. I'm sorry, the pre-council will be at six. Thank you for that correction. The pre-council will be at six. So, I amend my motion to state, the pre-council's starting at six, and the meeting, city council meeting's starting at six-thirty. Thank you for that correction. Any other? Okay. And all those in favor? And that's unanimous, Mr. Cobb. Thank you, council. To the outgoing council members, Counselor Calhoun, Counselor Houston, Counselor Dunn, we want to thank you for your service. I do want to yield my time at this time to allow you an opportunity to have remarks, if you would like to have them, or you're welcome to wait until it's your turn. So... Okay, Counselor Calhoun? Okay. Okay, okay. Well, we want to thank you all for your service. You have been a tremendous asset to this community, and we hope that we will see you around, working in our community as we work to serve you. Reminder, park board meeting is this coming Monday at 6:00 PM, October 27th, at 6:00 PM. I will let you know for public information that Mr. Parker, Buddy Parker, has resigned from the park board, and we will be looking to replace him. So, that's to give you that public information. His resignation was rendered, and I have accepted it. Budget, we have a budget work session scheduled for Tuesday, October the 28th, and that is considered an open meeting. It's at 4:00 PM, if you would like to attend. However, your participation will be very limited, but you are welcome to attend. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of Resolution 2025-33, Resolution of the City of Pleasant Grove, Alabama, authorizing travel advance for Mayor Yolanda Lawson, Counselor Ray Lassiter, Counselor Regina Van Williams, Council-elect Jaquise Gary, Council-elect Marion Gino Brown, and Council-elect James Wilkerson and D'Amica Hodge to attend mandatory training for newly-elected officials. And I've placed that in a form of a motion. I have a motion and a second. Counselor Calhoun was the second. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, bow your hands. And that passes unanimously. One other item I need to address with the council before we go on to the reports. Because we have not passed a budget and because we have not authorized holidays for this year, I do need to address two holidays. And then, the incoming council can address the remainder holiday, remaining holidays. I just don't want this to come up on us before we're, we have an opportunity to address them. So, normally, our employees and City Hall is closed on Veterans Day, which is November, Tuesday, November the 11th, 2025. And for the Thanksgiving holiday this year, for half a day on November 26th, which is that Wednesday, the 27th, which is Thanksgiving Day, and the 28th, which is that Friday after. And I'm making a motion to allow these dates to go forward as approved holidays for the City of Pleasant Grove, where City Hall will be closed, our employees will be off, and they will be compensated as a holiday. And that's in the form of a motion. Motion and second by Counselor Laster. Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, council. And now, on to the officers of the city reports. Counsel, I mean, Mr. Cobb? Okay, Mr. Cobb, okay.
I'm usually a pretty loud person, so y'all may want me to hold this away. Good evening, everyone. And I'm about to understand that the new mayor of Midfield's here. Class of 1992, go Patriots. Yep, I did graduate. All right. First off, I want to let y'all know, we lost an officer last week who resigned to go to another agency. But God blessed us, and the very next day, we received an application from an outstanding applicant. And we've already run through all the background checks. He's got nothing but high up there. And I think we're actually gonna be in really good shape with this officer. He'll start with us, actually, the first week of the new council coming in. So, we're looking forward to having him on board. Next, Halloween safety. Halloween is a very fun time, but it could also be a very dangerous time. I ask that each of y'all make sure we drive a little slower. We make sure our little goblins are wearing bright stuff. In fact, the police department, we're encouraging all children to come trick-or-treat us that week. I have glow-in-the-dark bracelets that we're gonna be handing out as part of their trick-or-treat package. So, we encourage you all to come wear those, or our children to wear those. We need to be able to see them. We are still in drought conditions. Yes, we had a little bit of rain the other day, which was, which was really helpful. However, it just barely scratched the dent of our drought. Everything out there is still very dry. Please be careful with your fires. I might have had one this weekend, but I was out there right with it, and I had my hose just in case. Be very careful with your fires. And finally, I would like to recognize Counselor Calhoun. Since he was, came on board a couple of years ago, he took the reins of the Public Safety Committee, and quite frankly, we've never had that level of support come in from that. And so, he's gonna be sorely missed, and I would like to present him with the chief's coin of excellence, which states... The coin states, "The bearer of this coin distinguished themselves through their dedicated service or partnership to make the community a safer place to live, work, and visit." And I can think of no better person to say this.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your drive report.
Chief? Do you have anything, Attorney Terry? Okay. Okay. Hearing no other reports, we will now move on to our city counselors. Counselor Laster?
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry. I don't have a whole lot. I just want to say, good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody. Good to see you, Mayor, new mayor of Midfield. Good to see you, my coworker and everything. Yeah. Wish you the best, man. I want to just thank the councils, Counselor Dunn, Counselor Calhoun, and Counselor Houston for your support, your work ethic, all the things that you've done since you've been here, your input. I mean, you guys have been so, so awesome to work with, and I'm just proud of you guys. It was good meeting you guys, became friends, and I just, not just only councils, but became friends, you know, helped on everything I was asked for, or whatever you guys worked with me, or I'm working with you all. It was, it was a blessing. So, I just want to thank you guys so much, and God bless y'all. And I know you guys got a great life ahead of y'all, you know? So, thank y'all again. Counsel, Mayor Lawson, I, alone a senior citizen, when we get ready to address that, I giving you... And hopefully, you will take a look at it. Okay, so, okay, okay, okay. So, other than that, I think I got one more thing I wanted to talk to. I got a call today from the PTA person, and they wanted me to... I will get with you later on on that. I was supposed to talk to them tomorrow, a little bit more, to find out a little bit more about what they want, what they want to talk about. So, I'll get with you when I get with them. Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, so y'all... I don't have much. Good evening to everyone. Hope everyone had a really good day. I want to just reiterate what the mayor said earlier with our kids. We had an awesome time on last week, and even just every day, just to go see the kids at the school, we are in great need of help for the children. And I'm not just saying it as, you know, a statement to sound whatever, but we are really in need of helping them. We have our, you know, we're leaving football, but right behind football, we have basketball. And we have to keep in mind that we have middle school, we have high school, we have the baseball team, we have volleyball. Volleyball is gone, but we have so many, so many, you know, different entities of sports. It's just not football. And the parents are taxed quite heavily because of the spirit packs and stuff of that nature. So, just find the time to find out what's going on at the school, just to kind of encourage our children. They really need us. They see us every day handling the city business, but they're often overlooked. They see us every day handling the city business, but they're often overlooked. So if we could just, you know, find that time and our resources just to dig deep, and as we ask, just say yes, at least once. That's pretty much all I have.
Good evening. I am so honored to be here. Again, I am so honored to be here. I am so honored to be given the privilege of serving you all as your city counselor. I've done not only my best, I think I've done really good. I appreciate my family for bearing with me. I appreciate the counselors for seeing, seeing my efforts and helping my efforts and giving me the opportunity to help your efforts. I thought we had a very, very good session during my tenure here. We got along well. We didn't always agree, but who does? But we were able to get, keep our focus on what helps the city of Pleasant Grove. Now, in the last five, six years, Pleasant Grove has changed dramatically, and we have some good people that's coming on behind us, and we need to support them. For, for a while there, we would get two, three, four, 10 people here, and you all coming to support us means so much, particularly after you've worked so hard to make your city the best it can be. Again, the council loves help. Everybody helped us. I appreciate that opportunity, and I am so honored with this, because when I started, I noticed that I was the chair of the Public Safety Committee, but there was no Public Safety Committee. Having worked in other municipalities, the Public Safety Committee helps the public safety, and it gives citizens a voice in public safety and in government. And so I found it monumental to have that, because you as citizens, taxpaying citizens, need a voice. And so they, everybody helped us get the voice, and the police department, I could brag on them all the time, and the fire department, and the rescue, and, and things like that. So we, we accomplished quite a bit in those years, and I'm looking for, forward to the next council accomplishing even more. I am here. I've been here over 30 years. I'm not going anywhere unless God says different, and I don't think he will. Okay? So you all can call on me. Ms. Dansby, you said some good things about me last week, and I appreciate it. That was only the second council meeting I missed, and it was to celebrate my mother's 100th birthday, which was, I mean, you're talking about a blessing. That was a blessing of blessings that none other can, can beat. And I give honor to the mayor. She works so hard as a counselor. Sometimes we were, I was her hearing board, but I was happy to be it. And sometimes I was her beater board between her and my wife, and I think I was happy to be that. If I'm not, I won't tell you. And so we, we really look forward to things coming, continue coming around. There are a lot of difficult decisions that we had to make and that we will have to make going on. But my plea is, let's make it as a team. Let's make it keeping focus on the future of Pleasant Grove, Alabama. The future of Pleasant Grove can be not only historic, but it can be so meaningful for our kids and the people coming behind us, that it is really in my heart. And I thank you all, and God bless.
All right. Good evening, everybody. All right. I like this idea of Mayor Lawson. This is kind of cool. We never did this before. This is really nice. Guys, I got a little speech. I didn't want to miss anything. So I'm gonna read it a little bit, but I'm gonna go off the script a little bit too, because I'm very sincere with my words and my actions. But as I stand before you tonight, my heart is filled with deep gratitude and humility. For the past five years, it's been one of the most greatest honors of my life to serve as your city councilman, serving the people of this great city, my neighbors, my friends, my community, and been both the privilege and a calling. What people don't know about me, when I first started even running for council, this is something I ran away from, from a long time, because I was like, God, are you sure? You sure? Like, I know I'm a work in progress. I stay on the construction, you know? And I prayed about it. I literally prayed about it, because I knew where my heart was at. I knew where my intentions were at, and I just wanted to give them all. And when you see the national spotlight of how the political climate is, it can be very discouraging. But I challenge everybody, if you want to change the climate of your community, whatever's going on, you got to step out there. You got to run for these offices. You got to come out here and help the mayor. You got to come out here and help these city councils. Otherwise, you're just another complaining keyboard warrior that's not going to change anything. Even if you lose, you don't. You learn. You come back better, you come back stronger, and you come back with more knowledge. This new set of city councils and the mayor is coming up. I can tell you with the, what we just came from, we did a lot of work. We did a lot of work. We achieved a lot together. We worked. We worked hard. We worked tirelessly. We put our community at first, and it was just an honor to be able to, to do that. And one thing y'all don't know, a lot of us did things behind the scenes that we'd never even said anything about, because we didn't want to draw attention to those that may have been going through some things, and want everybody's business to know if somebody was going through things. Sometimes it's good just to help people in private, just to be a blessing to somebody. But it's been an honor. I want to thank my family personally, my wife, my, both of my sons and my daughter, for rolling up the sleeves. Every time we had something, they were there with me. I could not have done this alone. And anybody that's up here and the ones that's coming up behind us, they, 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 they know, or they're going to be able to tell you what it takes to really function as a team, because it's not just these folks that get elected. It's their wives, it's their husbands, it's their children that have to show up to these events. When I say have to, yes, like, hey, we going together. We going together as a unit. Yes, you going. We're going to do this. We're going to clean up. We're going to participate. But we did it as, as, as a family and as a unit. And even though there can be moments of, you know, you may disagree, you know, you can agree to disagree on things. You're not going to see eye to eye, but it's always great to have that humble discussion with one another to get your ideas out respectfully. And that's what it takes for people to kind of meet in the middle and work things out. So, in closing, it's just been an honor, a pleasure, and a privilege to be a city councilman for the past five years. I want you guys to continue to be blessed. I want you to continue to work together as a community. And most important, I want you to continue to support your incoming council and your new mayor, because their success is contingent upon you. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to kind of, kind of read this, because I'm not real good at talking off the cuff, but I will do my best. When I first ran for the council spot 25 years ago, I committed to first, protecting our citizens' lives by supporting our fire medics. And my second commitment was to protect our citizens' property by supporting the police. My support for those has continued over the years. We have some of the best fire medics in the area, and really, if I leave Pleasant Grove and go somewhere else, sometimes I wonder about what kind of care I would get if I had some kind of problem. These guys are good. If you haven't had to experience them, which I hope you haven't, but if you have, you know how good they are. My support for these guys all still continued. We have some of the best. We've been able to recruit police officers, and now we've been able to provide all of them with a take-home vehicle, which was, for my part, I thought that was a real big deal. Over the years, some of the highlights of my tenure have been, and this is not just me, this is the mayor and the council. We committed a million dollars to Jefferson County Board of Education for an addition to the elementary school, so that all Pleasant Grove students would be attending school in Pleasant Grove city limits. As a city, we donated the land that the high school is sitting on to accelerate the timeline for the construction. By donating that land, we were able to jump ahead of a couple of other folks that weren't quite ready for it yet. We initiated a matching program for youth sports teams to improve our sports facilities. But really, the highlight of my tenure was the council's reaction after the 2011 tornado. As a council, we met very quickly and all agreed on these three items with equal priorities. First of all, to accelerate the cleanup, cleanup of the city, to maintain the police staffing and maintain the fire staffing to encourage residents to rebuild and return to Pleasant Grove, and that rebuilding continues. To our city clerk, Mr. Cobb, you do a wonderful job, and I appreciate the job you do for the council and you've done for me. I appreciate that. Chief Reed, you've always gone above and beyond on anything we have interacted on, and I appreciate that. I thank you for your service, first of all, to our country and to our city. And JD, I call you JD because I feel like we're friends. I appreciate you keeping us out of trouble. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Pleasant Grove for 25 years. I wish the new administration nothing but the best, and again, I say thank you.
Thank you all for, again, for your service, for those comments. We will miss you all, and we definitely hope, are, we're very hopeful that we will consistently see you all here with us in some capacity. So now we'll move on to the citizens' comments, if there are any. Okay, hearing none. We, oh, Ms., Ms. Dansby.
But I want to thank Chief Reed and his staff. I was out of state last week, and my alarm went off at my home. And so, since I was out of state, they decided to go ahead and call the police. I was able to look at my camera all around my house as your officer came, and to ensure that, you know, the outside perimeter was secure. And so I just appreciate that, and I felt comfortable and went back to sleep. Thank you.
I want to thank y'all for this welcome. I want to thank y'all for this welcome. I just come to learn a little bit. You know, just learn from other cities that I may take to my city, but y'all have made me feel like I'm at home. And thank y'all, and maybe we can have some kind of joint adventure going on, but I hope to do business with Pleasant Grove. Thank you.
See what it feels like to make a voter against them.
Yeah.